For a moment of silence and then we'll ask Ms. Erdley to lead us into the place to play.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, so much better.
That's an improvement.
Yes.
It's just fine.
That thing's awful.
Thank you. Shall we call the roll?
Mr. Bradley? Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Here.
Mrs. Tack?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a call. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of February 26th. If you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions. Thank you.
Kelly Phalas. Motion, Mayor?
Thank you. Motion's been made?
I'll make a second.
And seconded. If there are no corrections, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, in your packet, each of you should have received a copy of our latest check register. If you can't wait to receive that, thank you. And that brings us to public comments. And first on the list is our very own Natalie Park.
Is this where I stand? Hello, everyone. Is this on? Is it now? Oh.
They're on TV.
Don't make us nervous.
Okay, so in front of you, you should have a G-Town Eats Week poster and press release. Basically, the tourism office is hosting an eight-day culinary celebration for local dining establishments. So all of the participants on there during those eight days will offer special meals and deals. And we're just here to promote those local options. It's nothing really. It's just as a... We're putting out advertisements and things to kind of promote people to go and dine at those places. And then they're offering, you know, some people are doing new dishes that they've never had before. Some other people are doing deals with already established meals. But yeah, so if you all don't mind to take those posters, put them wherever you feel is necessary. I have more about here as well, but all that information, we have an event page. If you go on the Georgetown Tourism website, you can see more about the event, but that's basically it.
Are we supposed to hashtag it when we go and take picture of it?
Yes. So hashtag, it is hashtag G-Town Eats Week. But the kind of what we're going to kind of help promote this event, if you are dining during those eight days, if you take a photo of like your meal or whatever you're partaking in during that week and hashtagging G-Town Eats, you can be entered to win a dinner for two at any of the local restaurants. It'll be whoever wins their choice. So, but yeah, that's kind of the goal. And it's March 24th through the 30th.
Natalie, this fits, for me, it fits with everything you all are doing at tourism. You're promoting tourism in general. You're paying great attention to downtown. Promoting all the restaurants all over the community. I think it's just another example of great work that tourism's doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Mr. Anton Foltz.
Mayor, City Council members, my name is Anton Foltz, and I'm representing the Pastor and Priests Ministerial Association. I come before you tonight to make an appeal that we might be able to have a Good Friday community service. So I'm representing the pastors and priests. That would be March the 30th. And I realize that time is quickly approaching on us. But the requested location would actually be the Courthouse Square is where we would like to have. And we have a secondary location of having that at Georgetown Baptist Church in rain or, you know, ill-weather conditions. I didn't want to say that, but...
Chance up. Chance up.
I'll let you, I'll let you use that word.
Yeah, it happened.
But that's what I've come before you all tonight to ask.
Yeah, I can say that in some meetings with Anton and others that I think the local faith community, the Ministerial Association, and other groups within the faith community are making a very focused effort right now to work with the community. So this seems to be a natural extension of that. Anton, will this gathering need to close Court Street or you think you can do it on the square itself?
I feel as though it might possibly be wise to close prior to the event. The timeframe that we were thinking would be 12:15 to 12:45. It would be very concise, right to a half hour. But I would appeal to you all to see what your thoughts on that might be. Possibly just the entrance into that area, that parking that would be right up front of the courthouse, possibly. I don't think we would have to block off any other sections of Georgetown, though. So the idea would be that it would be kind of on that Good Friday, some local businesses either possibly closing early that day. But again, this would be primarily appeal to kind of our business owners and different ones in our immediate kind of downtown area. It's open to everyone, of course, but that's kind of our target. A combined effort or a unified effort among many of our different churches, from pastors and priests in our area. So we'll keep it right to 30 minutes.
I have a question. He says, if possible, they'd like to greatly benefit from access to power for a PA sound system. Usually when we do anything out there, it's over here in front of City Hall. So I'm wondering, is there any way that's like, if you're talking about not blocking this off down here, is there any outlets or anything closer to the courthouse for them to have a PA system?
Yeah, tourism, y'all do it for party on the square. And I'm sure there's lots of outlets out there.
Last year, they backed up against the old Galvins.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But are we going to close off the whole square? That's what you're thinking, Tracey?
That's what they did last year.
At lunchtime, you would think it would be slowed down a little bit here and there.
Well, and I think the courthouse is closed on Good Friday afternoon.
There you go.
Already.
Happy day.
So I hope that this is so great a success that we need to block off Court Street. I'm comfortable with us anticipating that.
Go ahead, David.
Make a motion.
Any questions about the Good Friday event? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anton, one other thing, while you're at the podium, it's not your specific event, but as a part of Good Friday, later in the day, St. John's Catholic Church is going to do a walk from downtown to the church with the stations along the way. Apparently, they've tried to do it for the last four or five years and have been rained out every year. So we've been approached by the church on how we could help facilitate that little parade down Main Street. And we went through it in a staff meeting today, kind of deeply, about... The request was, could we block parking on one side of Main Street? That's really hard to do, and it just upsets everyone. We're actually, it's easier for us to block one way of traffic for 30 minutes than it is to stop parking. So we're going to get with the leadership of the Catholic Church and try to work that out. But so in addition to your Good Friday at the square, there will also be another event in the afternoon.
It's not going to rain.
Oh, wonderful.
There you go. Anton, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
That's right. And as typically the practice, when we have good weather, we take credit for the good weather. And when there's bad weather, we say the judge isn't responsible for it.
Right, from street to street.
Number three on your public comment agenda is Mr. Stephen Price.
Mayor Fraser. Counsel, appreciate you letting me speak my mind. I hope you don't have to resort to the gavel again, Mayor Fraser, like last time. I'll try to avoid that. The reason I'm here is to call your attention to the fact that the town is creating or the town's violating daily repeatedly traffic laws that are supposed to apply to everybody. And I don't think that the town enjoys an exemption from KRS 189, which, let's see, prohibits an automotive driver from leaving the vehicle with the engine running. And your recycling trucks constantly habitually park and go do business and leave the engine running. And it's violation of KRS 189.430. The trash truck, the compactor trucks, if they're almost always, occasionally, fortunately, they're just an exception. There is an exception. But most of the time, when just trash trucks are rolling on the streets, they have bright, I guess what you call LED warning lights, amber to white color, flashing constantly. And under KRS 189.040, item 8, no motor vehicle in the state of Kentucky can display a warning light unless there is a traffic hazard that warrants the warning. And when your trucks roll down the truck in the normal flow of traffic or when they park legally or park normally, parallel park along the curb, anytime that your trucks are not creating a hazard... Of course, every vehicle, to drive it all, creates a hazard. But the law says that the lights can be displayed only to warn other motorists to use unusual care in approaching, passing, or overtaking the vehicle.
Steve, wouldn't that what those lights would be gone for? Is let them know that there's a garbage truck in front of them? That they stop several different times to pick garbage up, to be careful when you approach that? Isn't that what the lights are for?
That's a warning.
The lights are for when they stop to pick up the trash. If they stop and create a hazard in the road by stopping, they can display the lights. But not in the normal flow of traffic. And they're on constantly. Mayor Fraser, I mentioned to you at that meeting a couple weeks ago, school buses started all this. School buses put those strobe lights on the top, and they run them constantly. And under this law, they would only be allowed to display the lights when they stopped to load or unload children. But they have gotten away with this. The schools have gotten away with it for years, probably because somebody wants to sell them the lights. I would say that's got a lot to do with it. Sell them the aftermarket, or in some cases, they're probably manufactured into the vehicle, the strobe lights. So those are two violations. Well, just not, the school buses is not your violation, but the traffic, but the leaving the vehicles with the engine running is, that's your personnel. Turley, I've talked to him twice, if not three times about it. The other day, over there at Save-A-Lot, he was in Save-A-Lot or on the loading dock out there talking with Save-A-Lot personnel. The truck was down on the parking lot with the engine running. And I said, "Turley, you're breaking the law. You're wasting gas. You're making noise, and you're causing me to breathe those fumes." And he wouldn't turn it off.
Yes, sir.
So I came over here. I left a message with Arlene to relay to you. I don't know if she did or not, but you're... I've been reading about Louis Brandeis. I don't know if you know Louis, the name Louis Brandeis. He was a former justice of the U.S. Supreme Court, who came, born and raised in Louisville. And he was a friend of William O. Douglas, also a Supreme Court justice, who you may recall saved Red River Gorge by coming down here and hiking through the gorge back in the 60s when the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers wanted to build a dam and flood it. I don't know if you recall the name, William O. Douglas, but we owe Red River Gorge to William O. Douglas.
Yes, sir. Can, if you could come back to your point, Steve, and we could...
Yeah, yeah, sure. Right. The reason I mentioned Brandeis, in a case Douglas referred... He and Brandeis were friends. Of course, they both lived in Washington, D.C. and served under the same court. He says that Brandeis was always concerned about government breaking the law. And he said, in the Olmsted case, this is 227 U.S. Supreme Court, 438, 485. That's the case number. He says, this is Louis Brandeis writing in this case, 1928. "Decency, security, and liberty demand that government officials be subjected to the same rules of conduct that commands the citizen. In a government of laws, existence of the government will be imperiled if it fails to observe the law scrupulously. Our government is the potent, the omnipresent teacher. For good or for ill, it teaches the whole people by its example. Crime is contagious. If the government becomes a lawbreaker, it breeds contempt for law. It invites every man to become a law unto himself. It invites anarchy." And this is a, we have, I mentioned this, I'm sorry, no policeman here tonight, but this is a pleading going to Judge Dixon in the district court, or Judge Phelps, it is, actually. I'm asking her to require, people are breaking, not only you, not only you...
Steve, you have adequately made your point about these two issues.
Okay, well, is my time up?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda is mayor's comments, and I will keep them relatively brief this evening. I promise. First one is actually printed on your agenda, an executive order appointing Keith Bynum to the airport board. Those of you that have been around local government for a while know that Keith gave great service to the airport board for 30-odd years. And then he termed out because of our service ordinance. And he sat out a term, and the airport board has invited him back. Bill Taylor, who has given such wonderful service to the airport board, has been forced to retire his position. So worked with Bill and Sherry in the airport board. What we will be doing here is appointing Keith Bynum to, I believe it's about a one-year unused term that Bill Taylor's resigning from. And then Keith would be eligible for two full appointments of his own after that.
Thank you.
Thank you. One second. And if there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Wanted counsel to know, I know all the counsel is very excited about the progress the Scott County High School Girls Team made this year in going to the state tournament. And everybody's very excited about the potential for the Scott County boys to do well in the tournament that kicks off Wednesday. Marvin asked me about a resolution honoring these two ball teams, and we thought it entirely appropriate to do that. Talked with Superintendent Hubb this morning, and we decided that, just given the timing with tournament preparation going on and the possibility that if we invited them here tonight for a resolution, we could even interrupt a practice schedule, which is not our intention. So what we've done, we have set our council meeting on the 26th. At the beginning of that council meeting, we will honor both the Scott County High School Girls Basketball Team and the Scott County High School Boys Basketball Team. Just maybe they'll have a championship trophy with them.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
We are working on that for the 26th, so Marvin, appreciate that. Let's see. Anybody surprised when you woke up this morning about 2:00 or 3:00 and looked outside?
I was watching at midnight. It was coming down.
It was. It was an amazing snowstorm.
You seen all the pictures on Facebook, how beautiful it was.
It was a thick, heavy snow. What delighted me is we had plows out going at 1:00 this morning, and we worked closely through the night, talked with Robert about 7:30 this morning, and they wrapped up plowing and then started picking up trash. So I was really afraid today that with the amount of snow we had, that we might miss trash collection. But they got it all done today, so I'm real proud of them.
And they seemed to get around everywhere in Georgetown for the streets this morning, so they did a very good job.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah. Well, when you start at 1:00.
I heard them at 2:00.
You heard them at 2:00.
When I left the house at 5:30, the roads was in pretty good shape at 5:30 coming out of the subdivision Indian acreage, so the bypass had nothing on it. So they did a good job getting out to it.
Also, I want to report to the council that we had a meeting of the interlocal committee between the fiscal court and the city council this past week. And three magistrates, three council members, mayor and the judge make up that eight-person committee. And we went through two specific interlocals very carefully. The one for the 911 system, that is an existing interlocal that, you remember several years ago when we went back and we updated all the interlocals and fixed them and got them recorded at the Secretary of State's office? Well, we found when we went to review this interlocal that it had somehow fallen between the cracks, and we had not updated it as we had done the others. So Andrew presented that to the committee. It's the same format and the same content as all of our other interlocal agreements. But we just wanted to revisit it to make sure that we were still comfortable with the interlocal and its funding mechanism. We took each of the two interlocals we considered separately. The 911 agreement and then a new interlocal agreement between the city and the county to talk about the county's investment in Lanes Run Business Park with us. Since they had not been a partner before, that required a new interlocal agreement. Andrew is going to email each of you copies of these two interlocal agreements. And then if we could be in a position to vote on those interlocal agreements at the next council meeting. What the judge was adamant that we accomplish is that to get all of the details involved in these two big partnerships reduced down to writing in an interlocal agreement and have those approved by the court and the council before we ever ask either body to accept a bid. So we want all this detail worked out well in advance of us receiving bids. The one detail that when you receive the interlocal on the Lanes Run Business Park, something we wanted to be careful in there to protect the city's interest, is that when we developed Phase 1 of the business park, the county was not our partner. So Phase 1 is entirely owned by the city. We still have around $480,000 debt on Lanes Run Business Park. We make those with periodic payments out of our general fund. And that's an important point. We have never taken distributions from the Business Park Fund into our general fund. We've only supported the Business Park by making the debt payments out of our general fund. What we have specified in this interlocal agreement is going forward, if we sell an existing lot in Phase 1, those proceeds will go toward paying off our debt. Any lot sales in Phase 1, the proceeds will be dedicated to paying off our existing debt. Once that debt is paid off, then we will be partners with the county. And at that point, all funds will continue to go into the Business Park Fund for the purpose of maintaining the park, keeping it mowed, keeping it looking good, the way we want this to look. Also, if we can accumulate balances in that Business Park Fund, we should be able to fund some of our future development costs from that fund. So we're kind of prepaying the next phase of development with our lot sales. We also wrote into that agreement some flexibility for a future court or a future council. In the unlikely event that Business Park Fund accumulates a large balance, and the fiscal court and the city council at some point decided they needed, for some emergency project, they needed access to some of that funding. We wrote into this interlocal agreement that if the court and the council both agree, a withdrawal can be made by one party. And then we'll track those withdrawals so that we always catch up. What I told the interlocal committee, and what I firmly believe is, it's unlikely that we would ever declare a dividend. What's far more likely to happen is that we have to put additional capital into this. That's what's probably going to happen. But we did want to at least preserve that flexibility for a future court or council. And that is in there as well. Each of those interlocal agreements were discussed, and we asked for a vote on each, and they each passed seven to zero. So those recommendations were strong recommendations from the committee. You'll have those emailed to you, and then we'll vote on them hopefully on the 26th.
Mayor, can you say what you said about paying off the debt with the sales?
Yes.
Can you go over that one more time?
Sure. For Phase 2, well, for Phase 2, both the city and the county intend to pay cash. There'll be no doubt. That gets very simple. But since we still have $480,000 worth of existing debt for Phase 1, I'm glad that the county's willing to be our partner on Phase 2 and beyond. But I wanted to preserve our ability to pay off our debt in Phase 1 with Phase 1 lot sales.
Right, right.
So we just carved that out in the interlocal agreement.
Do we anticipate having that much, you think, at the end of the day? Will we net out that much?
Yes. And as a matter of fact, not to tease too much, but Jack's got enough deals in his pipeline right now that this becomes a very relevant section.
That's great news. That's good.
And what it will do, David, is it will stop us from having to make those debt service payments out of our general fund and just give us that more flexibility in the general fund.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
Andrew and I talked about this while Jack's here. I don't know that how relevant it is for a municipally-owned and operated and managed business park to have a cam, a common area. And I know it technically doesn't. So this, who would take care of just common area mowing and maintenance? Is that...
We really haven't had a budget to do it well in the past, David. That's why it'll get raggedy-looking and then people will just blow it.
Yeah.
But now, we think we're getting at this in a bigger way. And with a road that goes all the way from Cherry Blossom to Cynthia Pike, the appearance means more.
Right. I agree. We've talked about it.
I think we want it to look like it's manicured.
Yeah, yeah. And I know you can't go back and create, I mean, I guess you probably could, but you have to vote in fair... I know it'd be a nightmare. I'm not suggesting that, okay? You can smile. But I guess I was, you know, Andrew and I talked about it. Whenever you create a new phase or a new whatever, that kind of does potentially open the door. And maybe it's not even viable here to have some type of a common area... not even viable here to have some type of a common area or shared expense, and...
I'm aware of anybody that does it in terms of public scale.
Right. Right, right. Okay.
I'm not complaining, I'm not too sure that it would affect the depth, you know?
Yeah.
It would be under restricted limits.
And, you know, David, this initial engineering plan that you all have seen.
Yeah.
Or at least, it's available to you.
Yeah.
It lays out the primary bounce, the roads and where some of the big infrastructure will go. But we've been real careful not to lay out too many real specific lot lines, because we don't know.
Right.
What a customer is going to come in and asking.
What they're going to need.
And that could lend itself to some public space at some point. I wouldn't shut the door on that. I think we're setting ourselves up now to where we can look at those kind of decisions before.
Yeah. That's good. That's very good news. Appreciate the update.
Thank you. And want to thank your all's representatives on the interlocal committee are Polly, Connie, and Karen. And on the fiscal court side, it is Alvin Lyons, David Livingston, and Chad Wallace.
Thank you.
And the mayor and the judge.
Yeah.
Let's see, we've already talked about the Good Friday Parade. And also, I thought I'd do this under mayor's comments, it's as good as anyplace else. I failed to include on your formal agenda approval of the comprehensive plan. We had presented it at the last meeting and indicated that we would bring it for your approval tonight. I failed to put it on as an action item. So with your permission, I'll include that under mayor's comments. Joe, if you could come forward? Just in case there are any questions of any type. We, again, I think we had a pretty good presentation last time. We emailed you all some maps, I think, and some answers to questions that you had asked, so hopefully you've gotten all the information that we promised you we'd send to you. And I believe, absent specific questions for Joe, we're ready to adopt this one.
Resolution here.
So if you'd like, we can read the resolution, and then you all can fire away with any questions or concerns you might have.
Whereas after all required notices, consultation, review, and public hearing, the City of Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission adopted its recommended Great Scott Update of the Comprehensive Plan, a special meeting held December 19, 2017 at 6:00 p.m. The recommended Great Scott Update includes revision and reporting of the goals and objectives for each requirement of the plan. And whereas after required notices, reviews, and consultation, the update to the Comprehensive Plan was presented to the City of Georgetown City Council at its meeting held February 26, 2018. Now therefore be resolved by the City of Georgetown City Council as follows. Though the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission's recommended Great Scott Update to the Comprehensive Plan was approved and adopted as appropriately provided guidance for the public and private actions and decisions to assure the development of public and private property in the most appropriate relationship pursuant to KRS 100.083. Foregoing resolution was adopted by motion of, with a second by, and approved by the vote of the city council. Georgetown, it's a meeting held March 12, 2018.
Thank you.
I'll fill in the blank.
It's your turn.
Motion.
Motion's been made.
I'll second it.
And seconded. Thank you, Polly. And now that motion's been made and seconded, any questions for Joe?
Nothing, except that that's probably one of the best-looking plans I've seen laid out in the last three or four that I've seen. Outstanding, I think. I think everything inside of that was just so much easier to understand and read, and pictures and stuff were just great. They did a great job on, especially when he did it in-house. Great job.
Appreciate that.
I'd like to second what Marvin said, because I know we've looked through different versions of it, you know? And just the way it's laid out, it's so much easier to read and everything.
You can almost understand it all.
Actually, I was reading it after I went home, and the thing about the convert vacant big box facilities to community use in recreational spaces, I thought was interesting on page 180, because that's something that I hear a lot from people, you know? And, you know, you hate to see empty big boxes, you know, around. So that's something primarily that you all would try, like a public-private partnership, and your thoughts on that?
Yeah. We promote reuse of those structures, maybe splitting them up into smaller, usable space. You know, those areas, most of them are in zones that allow a multitude of uses, so I think it's just promotion of that space as being available when we get new applicants, people looking for sites.
Or businesses, yeah, coming here.
You know, Polly, it's interesting, we've got one of the, I think, the best examples of an adaptive reuse of a big box store. They're hard to do.
They're hard. I mean, they are tough.
But what Matt Welch did with the old Walmart on 25 is one of the best that I've seen done.
It's very good.
It's scalable, it's got entrances, it...
It does.
It's one of the few big box re-dos that I've seen done well.
Yeah, it is. No, it is, and I think that's, because they are hard to work with.
Yeah, and a lot of those big boxes have a lot of parking, have more parking than's really necessary.
Yeah. That's what they're saying.
For the use that go in there. So we have allowed, like Kmart has come in, and they've split off an outlot in the front corner of that site to help kind of promote redevelopment of that Kmart site.
Yeah.
Similar opportunities like that, allow, you know, let applicants, owners know that there's possibilities maybe for reconfiguration of the site.
Yeah, it gives them a little flexibility and freedom too on it, so. Good deal, looks good.
All right, thank you. Thank you. If there are no questions for Joe, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joe, after a year and a half's work, it's definitely simple at the end.
I know.
They did the hard work of compiling it all.
They sure did. Thank you, David.
That's the tough stuff.
Let's see. Again, since I'm just completely rearranging your agenda for you, it occurred to us as we were preparing for the meeting that I had put the second reading of the budget ordinance down on number 8, but many of the things we're asking you to purchase under number 7 require the budget to be passed. So I thought just to be fair to you, it might be best first to ask you to pass the budget that will allow the purchases to follow. Thought you all might appreciate that as council members. So if we could move on with the second reading of our budget amendment ordinance.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Summary, general fund, prior year revenues are increased by $511,043.23. Grant revenues increased by $35,000. Intergovernmental revenue is increased by $97,401.91. Other revenue is increased by $92,425. General government expenses are increased by $18,475. Council expenses are increased by $45. City clerk expenses are increased by $40. Police expenses are decreased by $35,551. Fire expenses are increased by $294,824. Dispatch expenses are increased by $119,483.82. Code expenses are increased by $5,320. City engineer expenses are decreased by $4,535. Transfers out are increased by $125,840.32. Capital expenses are increased by $211,925. Business park fund, other revenues are increased by $1 million, expenses are increased by $1 million. Grant funds, state grant revenues are increased by $11,427. Federal grant revenues are increased by $4,363.27. Other revenues are increased by $12,098.09. Police department expenses are increased by $16,461.36. Fire department expenses are increased by $8,795. Community development expenses are increased by $2,632. MAP fund, prior year revenues are increased by $108,098.86. Expenses are increased by $108,098.86. LGEAA fund, prior year revenues are increased by $5,116.36. Expenses are increased by $5,116.36. Drug fund, prior year revenues are decreased by $19,075.91. State expenses are increased by $15,748.67. Federal expenses are decreased by $34,824.58. Environmental services fund, prior year revenues are increased by $58,158.50. Intergovernmental revenue is increased by $5,427.50. Transfers in are increased by $101,185.26. Sanitation expenses are increased by $52,731. Recycling expenses are increased by $10,855. Stormwater expenses are increased by $111,185.26. Cemetery operating fund, intergovernmental revenue is increased by $6,827.50. Transfers in are increased by $6,827.50. Cemetery expenses are increased by $13,655. Capital project fund, prior year revenues are increased by $7,916.53. Intergovernmental revenues are increased by $473,671.68. Transfers in are increased by $7,827.56. Capital expenses are increased by $489,415.77. All ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www.dorchesterky.gov. Publicly introduced and read for the first time February 26, 2018. Publicly read the second time, March 12, 2018.
Thank you.
Motion made.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. I hope there are no questions, because I told Stacy we had this under control, and she could have the night off. Anyway, between Connie and David and me, we'll answer any questions you might have. And if there are no questions, we'll call it off.
Mrs. Butcher-Crowley?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Eardley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Stingle-Sames?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuckett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. And as we indicated previously, right at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have to bring another amended budget after we work out the timing of the county's interlocal payments on the big projects. We'll have to run those through our budget at some point, and we'll just have to do that in the moment, even though we pretty much know what it's going to look like. Item A on your agenda, I had mentioned at the last meeting when we did first reading of the budget that we had included some additional funding for the next phase of what we'd like the architect for us to do at City Hall. We know that with the major projects that are on our plate, we're not ready to make a full commitment to a construction project yet. But we have to begin, we think, to assess the building. And we did an RFQ process, looked at a number of architecture firms, I think all of the major regional players that you would recognize their name were a part of our RFQ process. We scored those and ended up selecting the firm Lord Act Sergeant. Is that's correct pronunciation?
Lord Act and Sergeant.
They have offices in Lexington. I think what caused them to stand out just slightly from all the other professional firms is their expertise in doing historic buildings, and their expertise in helping us explore historical tax credits. And we know that's going to be a reach for us as a government, but we're exploring those. And we're even willing to explore, if historical tax credits are a possibility to help us finance this, being a government could be a barrier. We're even willing to look at potentially a not-for-profit structure. However we can get this done and protect the citizens, we're going to consider. But the next phase is for this firm to do a complete assessment of the building. They're talking about doing x-ray scans of walls, they're going to do digital scans of the building so that they can input that data and actually have City Hall in digital form and be able to manipulate it for future architectural drawings. This assessment is very thorough, and it's expensive. It's $66,000. And what that buys us is a thorough understanding of our building, what its condition is and what we really need to be paying attention to. We think this will be the key building block to help us develop what plans we will do and the time schedule that we can do them based on our available funding. Steps one, we think, is to understand what we have, and that's what this contract does.
We have no idea what we need to do with this building yet.
No.
We can guess.
We know we've got some, you know, makeup, what you want to call it, but we don't know what's here and what's on the ground.
And the walls.
We really want to know.
Yep.
And I realize this is an expensive contract to get to that phase, but I think it's the right first step.
But they are, the contract, I'm sure I understand the contract, is going to talk about the structure soundness of the building.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Every bit.
Engineering, that's what.
But it doesn't include, doesn't include, I don't think, an engineered set of plans to tell us what the costs are going to be.
What it's going to look like.
Right, right, right.
That will be our next phase.
Right.
So this is purely an assessment. And I knew that that was expensive, that's why we looked at it for just a little while, and we talked with the firm some, and we just didn't rush to bring that to you. And then we finally built it into the budget and thought, hmm, we think it's the way to go forward. Mark?
I don't know if we're going to read this or not, but I'm going to make the motion on it. I think we've got to do this.
Yep. We have to.
I agree with you.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded. Shall we call the roll? Or, we don't have to call the roll.
No.
What did I say now, all in favor?
Yeah.
There you go.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And these folks have already been all over this building amazingly. Karen, they put on tennis shoes and went up in the alley.
Oh, my goodness, everybody needs to do that once.
Once. Once is plenty.
If they get the contract read, there'll be something in that alley, most likely.
Possible.
That's the plan. I'm pleased that we're finally to item B, municipal order approving engineer services for our streetlight project.
Yay.
You all gave us a little more financial latitude with the company, and we've selected what we think are good projects to start an effort like this with. We're going to light up three major intersections.
Yeah. What we did was we went back to them and said, here's the budget the council set. Tell us what you think we ought to do. And their response was, get your biggest bang for your buck, identify the intersections that see the most traffic. And it just so happens that some of our biggest intersections didn't have adequate lighting.
I don't know how many.
We're talking about ones that you would never imagine, the bypass in 460 East and the bypass in 460 West, all are major intersections and have only one light.
Yep.
I know.
I can imagine.
And then they identified the same thing with 25 and Champion Long Lake. And then we know that there's been a lot of concern about from Connector going out towards Crumboff being completely dark. Those are the four sort of pilot.
So how many total lights are we looking at? Adding?
They'll tell us that, I think.
Yeah, I think it would be three in each of the big intersections, at least. And then a good seven or eight from on the stretch there on 460 West or East.
That's awesome.
Is this kind of a continuation of what was going on out in front of Cherry Blossom? I mean, is it, will it be the same format, same style? The reason I'm asking that question, it won't be the same.
I don't, I mean...
Remember we approved the project on Oxford Road there at Cherry Blossom? And they recently put in the posts, and they're wood posts, they drilled the holes, I guess, put the post in, and it looks like, they haven't done this yet, but it looks like there are going to be overhead wires. Do you know, do you all know if that's the case?
The ones that are on the bypass, they're like the metal ones that go up and look like that.
Right, right. Or commercial grade.
Yeah.
I mean, this one's yet to be completed, but I'm just kind of curious if...
Sometime we can ask the consultants. Their job is to take existing drawings.
Yeah.
And existing rights away, and try to find the quickest route to get a light up.
I got you. I'm sensitive to aesthetics, and I think we all are, about many things in... I'm sensitive to aesthetics, and I think we all are, about many things in this community. And I'm not being negative at all. I'm just saying it'd be nice to see a plan on that. We talked about the plan for the water company, and, you know, if we're approving major capital expenditures, to me, it's nice to see some of the details.
So here's, this is relevant. Again, their, their, their job is to design the electrical engineering part.
Okay.
And the idea is that KU will then take that and say, we'll put that light in for you.
All right.
Your tariff.
Okay.
So the tariff has numerous options on what we can and can't put in.
Okay.
Including LEDs. They've finally added LEDs to their tariffs. So under that tariff, you'll see they'll say Cobra Head fixture, thirty-five dollars, or decorative this and that, forty-five dollars.
Right.
You get options under that.
Yeah.
And the engineer's job really, I mean, other than determining whether it can be attached to an existing pole or a new pole has to be put in, that's the extent of what they'll do.
I'm with you. I guess all I'm saying is for almost any new residential development coming to Georgetown, they're putting underground utilities in. You're not seeing the overhead poles anymore. And that'd be my preference. If, if we're going to do this, that'd be my preference is to go that direction if we can afford it.
Put in conduit.
If it's viable, yeah. It kind of shocked me when I saw the poles on Oxford. And again, it hasn't been completed, and I'm not being negative. I mean, they're grateful to get any lights, but.
All of this stuff is in state right of way, and I could be mistaken, but I think they will probably require us to keep it in conduit. But that's a message I'll definitely pass on to.
I think we prefer.
Yeah, sure. I agree.
Yeah.
The other thing, we continue, even with this project, to talk to our friends at Harshaw Train.
I'll still ask that, yeah.
They're working, they're watching KU's tariff schedule, and KU's now picked up LEDs for the first time. But they may not be as competitive as, so this is another chance for us to evaluate how we want to install these or put or own them.
And get more bang out of it.
And it could be KU, it could be Harshaw Train, it could be something they advise us on, but we're finally at the point of identifying the four spots and getting the engineering done.
Yeah, it's good.
It's a start.
You know, Mayor, there's been twice, I know, I know we're working on it. It's the area that Mark had brought up, the four sixty that's between Fett Katz and to where the subdivisions are there. Two times since Christmas, going home, one, there was a mattress out in the middle of the road that had fallen off somebody's car. You could not see it. Cars are right up on top of it. And then not too long ago, I called again, I called nine-one-one to have it removed, but I called again, a piece, a metal piece off of a tractor about this big had fallen off the back of a tractor and was laying in the middle of the road, and it was painted black, and it was so dark then. And I went back around to make sure that it was what I thought I had seen, and before I got back around, somebody had clipped it with their car, and I'm sure they went on, but I'm sure they had a dent in their car. But things like that, the drop and you can't see it, is just accidents, so it'll be very, very helpful to have the lights to help.
Well, you all, as a group, council has asked for this for quite some time, and I'm glad we're finally getting to the point of being able to show you something.
Here too.
So you would like to read the minutes more?
Sure, or Mark wants to.
Mark made the motion. Good.
I'll say.
And Millie's second. She is.
All right.
She loves some streetlights, too.
Yes, I do. I love some streetlights.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Jack Connor here is with us tonight. One of those property sales that we were talking about later.
Today, representing Scott County United and the Georgetown Business Park Authority, and I was just honored to present to the mayor a contract for six point three three acres and Lanes Run Business Park on Corporate. If you take a look at the maps that I've given you, that would be, this is not a literal partial, partial number thirty-five, so that would be right across the street from YSPS and adjacent to Creform and Scaria. So six point three three acres. We've identified this, as you all know, in other contracts are presented either by the name of the company, or in this particular case, it's by the NICS code, North American Industrial Standard Classification Code, because this company is filing an application with Kidva for a KBI Kentucky Business Investment Act incentive. Application's not in yet. Application's not complete, quite frankly. But because the contract has the clause, or what we call the but for clause, but for the incentive, the company would not be doing the project, and it has to go to Kidva so that we keep this project's name off the record. When, if they go in March or in April, once the incentive is approved, then obviously the company's name will be made public. So I'm going to just read to you what I have written as it relates to client number two three eight two two O, which is the NICS code. The company is a full-service mechanical company in industrial process fabrication and welding, plumbing, HVAC, refrigeration, heating, and boiler installation. They quite frankly are a large vendor to our largest manufacturer in town. This project is a significant expansion of an existing company. Their expertise is certified unique welding procedures. As I've told you, the new facility will be located on Corporate adjacent to Creform. The company itself will be building, I've seen the drawings, building in excess of fifty thousand square feet. That's about all I can tell you of the project. It will, it is an existing company. It will add new jobs to the community, obviously, new Advilorant tax, as well as for the benefit of the council and the city in relationship. This is phase one land, so all that money's, once we close it, will go back to, as the mayor said, on the indebtedness, the current indebtedness. I can also say, if you don't mind, Mayor and Council, I'm working on a number of other clients. Let me just point out to you, top the page, ten A, ten B, and eleven, we have a client we've been working on for about three years there for those three partials. The first one, ten A, has already been purchased by a private individual, but that's something that the client will be purchasing, so we're working on that project. Really, really, really good, exciting project. South of Country Boy, we're working on four acre tract there, working with the city attorney in relationship to contracts, et cetera. Working with a large company on lot twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Some of that's phase two, some of that is in phase one, and that project should be in the neighborhood of fourteen or fifteen acres. Also met today with a client who is looking at lot thirty-one and thirty, more in thirty-one, and then probably will do a first right of refusal on lot number thirty at some point in time. I just wanted to end by saying this, though. This project you have before you, that's a culmination of a couple of years' work. Some of these other ones, the one, the larger, the fourteen acre, that's been three, four, five years, quite frankly. But these are all coming together, some phase two, some phase one. So I can answer any questions.
You're sorry, Mark? Jack, within phase one.
Mm-hmm.
How many lots are left that are?
Well, that's an interesting question. It's really have to look at acreage, if you go back, because we don't have lots.
Okay.
That's kind of what I said about this. It says six point five, but we're only going to chunk out six point three three. If you, if you refer to, you don't have it with you, but I carry this thing around a lot. This is what was used in the joint meeting that you all had with the fiscal court. Let me give you the exact amount, Mr. Showalter. Should have it right here. Phase two has about a hundred and sixty-two acres in it. Phase one, about thirty-seven acres left. We have sold, if that's what you're asking, we have some undevelopable property in phase one over off of endeavor. Bad terrain, bad topography. We have sold to date right around ninety acres. We've generated a little bit over two point one million dollars in terms of land sales. Doesn't include this. I could probably go on forever about this, right? Hope to answer your question.
And it is, it's a general answer, Mark, given that some of these lots do have some topography problems, there's some drainage issues.
Absolutely, yes.
And then we give the flexibility to the customer on just how much space they might need.
Absolutely.
But we, we do think there's sufficient land in phase one to pay off our debt.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Good.
So we have a resolution approving this sale? Is that correct?
Sure. Resolution of the City of Georgetown authorizing the sale of property at the Lanes Run Business Park, whereas the City of Georgetown owns property known as the Lanes Run Business Park, which is held for sale to persons and corporations for economic development purposes, and whereas the company has offered to purchase plus or minus six point three three acres of land at the park for twenty-five thousand per acre for operation as NAICS code two three eight two two O. Plumbing, heating, and air conditioning contractors, and whereas the city is authorized to transfer land to the business for economic development purposes pursuant to KRS eighty-two oh eight three subsection three, so section B, and whereas the city, by and through its business park authority, has negotiated a contract for sale of the property with the business, and whereas the business park authority has approved the sale of land to the business. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Georgetown that the council does hereby authorize the sale of plus or minus six point three three acres to the business, and the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the real estate sales and purchase contract negotiated by the business park authority. This resolution was approved by the vote of the city council, City of Georgetown, on the twelfth day of March twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
We're in unison, aren't we?
Second.
You pick.
Of course. Pick whoever. It's okay. We second.
Okay. If there are no questions for Jack, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jack, these are some rather exciting times for Lanes Run Business Park.
Yes, sir. Just leave it right at that.
As a council member, I would just like to say thank you for what you do for this city and taking care of the business park. It's, it's sort of like your little baby pet peeve that you, you just, you know, just do a great job for us. I do appreciate it. I know this council does.
We do appreciate it.
I can, I can say I have an office in the chamber, and he is always on the phone, always working. He is always hours a day. Working it, so.
Thank you. We're at a point in the council meeting where we would like to ask for an executive session, and for those in the audience, we, I hope it won't be a long executive session, but that's always not my decision. We do anticipate potentially taking some action, Dan, after we come out.
Stay focused. I make the motion to move into executive session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight one oh one B to discuss future acquisition or sale of real property. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Hey, while we're here for this purchase. Hey, while we're here for this purchase...[161.41]
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
We don't really have a resolution.
We just need a...
This... We would ask for a motion that we purchase the Stiddleman property in the Basler Farm area of our business park at a price of $465,000.
Sixty-nine.
$469,000. Thank you.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded that we purchase the Stiddleman property at $469,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, based on its over the appraised value.
Thank you. Motion carries. And that completes our agenda except for council comments. And Mark, can we start with you?
The new police department sport utility vehicles are nice.
Yeah. They're very sharp.
Saw one in action late Friday afternoon and...
The video from the equipment company, four of them rolling out of their garage.
Yeah, I like that.
And that's a direct benefit of this enterprise lease program. We couldn't have bought all those, but we were able to.
That's good.
Yeah, thank you.
I had the opportunity of seeing one in action too in front of my church when I got pulled over.
Oh, okay.
In front of the church?
They were coming, they were pulling in. I was leaving before second service started and pulled them over right there by Zaxby's. I went, wow, they do look nice, Mark.
(laughing).
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. I do want to ask you about Derby Estates. Where are we with Derby Estates? Are they...
Oh, yeah.
To be honest, I can't give you a good answer, Connie, because we're in between engineers and really feeling it.
Okay.
I think, is it March 19th?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the beginning date for our new engineer.
I just have someone that I need to call back. He's asked me.
We did ask the engineers for an update and they seemed to think that they were close, but I think they were being held off by things like weather. Because what they really need to do is clean up and straw and seed and stuff like that.
Yes.
And they really can't do that when it's all nasty.
Okay.
I mean, that, there's really not much left, other than that is my understanding.
Okay. I'll follow up with that until March 19th and I'll get one more call back. That's all. Thanks.
And that, that new hire will be drinking from a fire hose for at least a couple of months.
Yes, he will.
Once the engineer gets here. Because we've got a lot stacked up.
Yeah.
Anything here? David? Marvin?
Nope.
Yeah, they had the tourism video. I think you shared it on your Facebook page with Michael Blowen from Old Friends and it was just really good, the aerials of downtown Georgetown and lots of positive comments on it, so.
Michael's such a good spoke...
Oh, he is. He really is. He's so excited and into it, so. It was a fun thing.
Good, thank you.
I spoke with a gentleman named Mr. Horn, the facilities director or manager of Georgetown College. And we discussed recycling. And they recycle metal and cardboard, the college does, turns it back in and get, they get somewhere between five and $7,000 a year that they put back in. He's very interested in meeting with me about plastic and aluminum. And I talked with Robert Bruin and Mr. Bruin said that there may be a situation, once we try to work it out, that there's a pickup every other week at one central location where there can't be garbage put in there, that it's strictly recycled materials. So I'm going to meet with him this week, talk to him.
Good.
So.
All right. Anything else to come for the council?
No.
If not, we will stand adjourned.
Give me that check, John. Let me give that...